Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Self Supervising Board of Directors meeting. It is Thursday, June 20th, 2024 at 5:30. One of the first things I want to do for the benefit of Richard, because sometimes people are off out of the computer screen, is just make note of who is here. So you've got Scott McMenney, Nicole Whalen is on, is joined remotely. Katie Aiken is here, Ray Molino is here. Jessica Bakayaki is here. Glenn Herbert is here. Jeff Neek is here. And everyone. And I think that's everyone at this moment. So that was one of the things Richard asked of all of us is to be a little more clear as to who who makes motions, who seconds, and then also who is here, just so he has that as he's doing the minutes. First up on the agenda this evening is public comments. See nobody in the room for public comments?
I don't have anybody.
Okay. Item two on the agenda is finance, treasurer's report. That will need to be tabled. As you probably saw, there's not a treasurer's report in the packet. So moving on. On the agenda for operations, student services vehicle lease that will be tabled. There's a little bit more research going on before we will be asked to have any action on that. So item B under operations is Time Clock Plus.
I'm going to address that. So you may remember through the budget process that the SPSU budgeted $18,000 for a timekeeping system, electronic timekeeping system. We did identify. Electronic timekeeping system for people to clock in and that are building our hourly employees. We've gone through the process. We've selected a vendor that is now under Power School, the same vendor that provides our payroll system. So it makes good sense. The contract proposed by them falls within the amount budgeted, actually less than that. The reason I'm asking the board for an action requested is that the term of the contract that they propose is 36 months. And we can only sign one year contracts without the board's express permission. So I would be asking for approval to sign it three year, 36 month contract, as well as for the permission for me to sign the contract, which they've already provided a copy via DocuSign for me to sign, once if, once approved by the board. So.
Is it their company policy to only do 36?
It is their preferred model. Essentially, they're they want to lock you in for a longer period of time because there's infrastructure expenses, training expenses, and things like that. I have personally have no concerns about the length of the contract. We're very likely to be with this payroll system for the definite future. This is their preferred provider. They have a partnership with them, so it's the natural.
Have you seen the actual system of the punches? Does it look fairly?
Yes.
Seating straightforward?
Yes, and what we're doing to make it easier on employees to learn the system is we're gonna, there're gonna be multiple ways that employees have options to do the punches. We're not actually investing heavily in physical infrastructure clocks. The clocks themselves are expensive, but with mobile devices and pre-existing devices, it's a pretty easy process and it minimizes our upfront cost rather than putting clocks all over every building. We can do it with very minimal clock. So on an ongoing basis, it's relatively inexpensive.
So what's the name of the company?
Sorry. So it's Time Clocks, Time Clock Plus, which is under Power School. Power School is a vendor we already utilize through.
Okay, so what we're looking for is a motion to approve a contract with Time Clock Plus for the budgeted Time Clock improvements for the term of 36 months. And additionally, to have, maybe it needs to be two separate motions to make it so you can sign the contract. So let's do that in two separate motions. So the first one, first motion would be for the contract with Time Clock Plus to be approved for 36 months.
I'll make the motion. Jeff, make the motion.
I'll second.
Katie, second. Any discussions? Any further discussion?
I just, this is Nicole. I just had a question. Nick, you may have said this. What is the term of the agreement for them under the payroll system? And does this line up with that? Is that an annual renewal or where are you in that contract with that?
So that is actually funded by the state. So the Power School payroll system that we use, we do not currently pay for because the state pays for it because we were willing to go onboard with the new system a few years ago.
They are.
We know you can address that a little bit better.
Yeah, but so the AOE's term with Power School is up FY '25. They are pursuing a two-year extension beyond that and are also exploring further extensions beyond that. But when they initially, the legislation came out that they wanted all school districts and supervisory unions on one common program across the state, which has since been pulled back by the legislature. It, that when they started, they, yeah, it was through '25 with a two-year optional renewal, but they're looking to extend beyond that. So because I pulled at the time, I think we were paying $90,000 for our Tyler software. I was able to pull that out of the budget back in FY '19, I think it was. I haven't, as much as I'm not happy with this system, I'm not ready to go back and ask for another $200,000 to switch to another program because I did get pricing and that's what it would be to go back to our legacy system. When the AOE is basically paying for this now, but it's unclear after 2027 if we'll have costs associated with it. So for now.
And if we did end up in a situation where two years down the road, we're still under contract with Time Clock Plus, they integrate with Tyler, they're the largest provider of timekeeping systems in the country. So they integrate with most payroll systems, including our legacy system. So pretty broad.
I'm fine with it. I just wanted to understand if we were locking ourselves into a term that didn't coincide with the other component of this, but it sounds like there's there are probably options if we get to that point. Thanks. Thank you.
Right.
Who has to punch in?
So it would be hourly employees because it is a, it is not an attendance system. We have that covered. You know, you're here or you're not. It would be our not exempt employees, our hourly employees who are punching in and out of the rooms. Currently, and that you may remember this from the budget proposal, when this was put into the budget for the next, for next year, we're using signed sheets for, signed, physical paper signed sheets for 330 hourly employees across 10 buildings. So it's, you probably won't see that in any employer of that size anywhere else. You know, if you work at the hospital or somewhere, you are punching in and out. It's some electronic mechanism. And so that's the, that's where we're headed.
And you know, punch out when they go on lunch break and things like that.
So there are options for how we set that up. We can set up the automated lunch piece to keep it simple for employees. But yes, you could absolutely set it up and punch out for lunch. Set it up to switch to job, different job codes. Very flexible in terms of how we set it up. We want it to be simple for employees. We're already sort of formulating a plan for how we're going to roll this out so that it's not jarring and difficult for people. But it will represent a change in terms of how they instead of going to the front desk and signing in, they'll have options to do the digital touch. Exactly. Lots of ways.
Ready for a vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? And any abstentions? Okay. It's unanimous. Item four on the agenda is policies, of which there are none.
I understand that we can both still allow them to sign.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Second part of that is to allow Nick to sign that contract for the agreement with Time Clock Plus.
I'll make that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any abstentions? Now we'll move on to item four.
The auditors like it when we have everything in order.
We like that too. Item four on the agenda is policies, but there are none. So we'll move into the consent agenda, which is item five. Unless there are any objections, I would ask that we those as a group, which includes minutes, warrants, leave of absence, retirements, resignations, and nominations.
Is there a clarification there? Six A, it's Ruth Hutner, not Hunter. Is that six? Six A under nominations.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All those in favor of moving the consent agenda?
Scott, I'm sorry, I have one question. In the folder, am I missing minutes?
I caught the fact that the treasurer's report wasn't there, but I missed that one.
The minutes were sent to us. They're just not in this packet.
They were sent, that's right. They weren't in the packet.
Okay.
I don't know whether that meets protocol or not.
Probably shouldn't approve.
I think without them being included.
Since they're not here, you know, you don't have a chance to comment. If you have any, I don't have any comments, so I read them. He understands.
So why don't we table the minutes part of that and we'll approve them at the next meeting? So we will move as part of the consent agenda, warrants, leave of absence, retirements, resignations, and nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Superintendent's report.
Yes. Well, I have one little item and then I'm going to turn this over to Gault for, to share some information about substitute rates for school year '24, '25. Part of my responsibility early this year was to present continuous improvement plans in partnership with principals at all your meetings. Monday afternoon, we received tentative, we received an email from the state that they've been tentatively all approved. We're just waiting for the final stamp in the system. An ask had been to make a, to see if I could get the district's goals onto one page that you could have and keep. And so the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Melissa Senical, and I have created that first draft. So I'm going to hand this to you now and then we'll also send it electronically out. But again, we just received word and so I wanted to, again, this was a request of this board to get these to you. So there's a hard copy and an electronic one is coming, Nicole and Jessica.
There you go. You're welcome. There you go. Good job. You love them?
So again, the top page just, we tried to, we took the feedback to try to put these in the simplest of terms. And the second, the pages that come after that, which again will pass on so they get posted, this is some strategies that'll be used to meet the goals. And then as board members, you really wanted to know what to be thinking about as you move into budget season in the fall. So there's some suggestions there as well. So this is just going to be a conversation point. And then what will happen now is we just finished our spring screening window. And so all that data right now is being, at the school level, principals have just used that data the last couple of days with their leadership teams to plan for the start of the school year. And then we'll be making presentations to you right off the bat in fall linked to these goals. So how are we doing in relationship to these goals is the next step. And so you'll get that in the fall.
Every one of the marginalized, non-marginalized students wants a special ed or vice versa groups?
So that is, I'm not gonna, so I'm gonna, we're gonna report out based on these goals. And we do have goals linked to the historically marginalized students. I'm looking at one right now under English Language Arts and Math.
Yeah.
So yes, we'll be reporting out, at least on that, yes.
When you said screening, just to make sure I understand it right, when you say screening period, that would be the spring testing?
So we have, there's two, well, there's two different kinds of assessment windows. There's the assessments that we do internally three times a year. So that's when we use our internal measures with our NWA MAP and FastBridge and the Student At Risk Screen Scale, which is the SRSSID for social emotional. So three times a year, we do that internally to make plans for instruction and intervention. And then we also take the state assessment, which is a summative once a year from the state. We take that in the spring as well. So we'll be reporting out both, all of that in the spring.
What's that test called? I'm going to kick them home and say they had a word. BS test?
No, it's, they changed the name because they went with a different vendor. I, I, hold on just a moment. So I'm gonna, so the reporting out is called the annual snapshot. The actual assessment, I don't have the exact name in front of me, so I, but I will get you that exact name. It has an acronym that's attached to it.
So they went with a different vendor, but is it a different Adam test? Is it Vermont Adam?
Adam. See, I, I, like, I want to say, but I want to be right before I say it out loud. How's that?
I'll wing it. On the tip of her tongue.
It is on the tip of my tongue.
And that's a test that also needs taking?
Yes, we actually, for the state test, we actually have to meet, yes, we have to meet a threshold, a base set of threshold that we have to meet each year. And so our director, so when our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment comes back and presents in the fall, she, I am writing down all of your questions right now, but she'll come back and share, including all the acronyms that go along with that. But yes, we have a percentage that we have to make. They are very strict about making sure. There is an alternate assessment, but you have, there's certain criteria that has to be met to be able to access the alternate assessment. And our Department of Student Support Services helps to determine if that's a need using the IEP or the 504 process. And they give us criteria for that.
So I guess my, if I made a question I have when it comes to these goals, if I read, if I read just the first one that is in my mind or in my eye. By June 27, 65% of students exiting third grade will be proficient in ELA foundational skills, the building blocks of reading, and measured through spring 2027 student FastBridge scores.
Yep.
How, how do I know we're not already at 65%?
So that's a great question. When we developed these goals this past year, we, so at the district level, we used data from the previous school year ending their goals. Almost this past fall. So that data is from our prior school year. And so actually what we're going to do right now is we're going to see how close we are to that mark.
Okay, so if we're, if we're at it, do we now say 17?
So yeah, absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely, yeah. So these are not a lot. So we reached this goal, we are resetting our goal. I will be thrilled to be here and say, and I believe we can. I believe, today we had our first curriculum team meeting. Most of the day, we had the math curriculum team, which is, you know, a district-wide vertical team here. And, you know, if you go down to that math goal, what, you know, Melissa Senical and I were doing with them is we were looking at this particular goal and their individual school level goals. And we're, we were thinking about what, you know, what are you going to be implementing next year? Which you've already started this year to make sure that we're meeting this goal. So it is, so it is all about that, yes. You made it in the round.
Are we meeting here to the state level too?
Yes, yep, Melissa's going to, yep, Melissa Senical's going to report out on that as well, yeah.
And was it the comprehensive assessment plan?
Yes. Like on the tip of my tongue, but it wasn't coming off and I wasn't going to say it out loud until I had it. So thank you so much.
Is there a, and I know you could go crazy when you start to get into data and slicing and dicing, but I have a particular, I think, interest in not only where we compare to the state level, but where we compare to other districts like us. Because I think that, I think that that.
Well, we have to go back to what we have to do within the state room. When we, when we use the Vermont State Assessment, we use what the state provides for us with Snapshot to share. And so I've written down your question. When we use something like NWA MAP or FastBridge, those are norm reference. So that's, those are national norms. So that's like a pure, you're right. So I can, LS, I'll, I'm going to pass these questions along to Melissa Senical for my director. So we look forward to the fall, so, but thank you for that task.
Thank you.
And Nick?
Yeah. I'm going to pass out the proposed substitute rates for this coming school year and I'll walk you through it quickly, plain. What we are proposing. So as you can see in the first bullet, substitute rates have not been changed since '21, '22 school year, the last time we came to you and asked to modify these. We have a current structure, so I'll start with teachers. We have a current structure for teacher subrates that pays different rates by degree. That's fairly unique. We don't see that in many other school districts when we gather data from others, which happens regularly because everybody's always gathering data and trying to stay competitive with substitute rates. Most schools have one or possibly two rates, certified and not certified rate, meaning certified teacher, not certified teacher. That is essentially our proposal, to consolidate our teacher substitute rates as well as to increase them. The first rate you will see is, under the proposal, is the certified teacher. So a licensed teacher who's coming in as a pergium. So we would propose increasing that from 2043 up to 2250, which is a 10% increase from the current rate that was set back in '21, '22. The non-certified rate, so this is collapsing three different rates, non-degree, associate's degree, and bachelor's degree. Collapsing those into one rate, the proposed rate there is 1775 per hour. And so as you can see, the range of that increase depends on whether you're comparing it to the no degree versus the bachelor's degree. But it would result in two different rates, certified rate of 2250 and a not certified rate of 1775, which is very competitive with surrounding school districts from the data that we've, that we've commented. The second one is the paraprofessional rate, currently $14, has been since '21. Propose moving that up to $16. There's two reasons that you'll see we're doing that. One is obviously to increase it and make it more, more attractive and competitive with our neighbors. And secondly is to align paraprofessional office and custodial subrates. We've seen that with a lot of other places as well. They just use one subrate. And that way, if somebody wants to sub, they don't have to worry about the different, you know, a dollar here, a dollar there. If they want to sub as a para, if they want to sub as a custodian, if they want to sub in an office. It's one rate, one unified rate, and it's a simple decision for them. And so that would be the rate proposed for paraprofessionals, office subs, as well as custodians, which also aligns with Arlington's custodian rate. The only rate that isn't the same. Otherwise, we all follow the same rates. And then the last piece would be the nurse subrate, currently 2115, proposed rate of 2450, an 11% increase from the rate set back in 2021. Included the last section of bullets because we've always been mindful of where our full-time employees are from an hourly perspective to make sure that we aren't setting substitute rates that make subbing potentially more attractive and full-time employment to somebody who doesn't need the benefits package. And so I just included next year's rates for our first year custodian, paraprofessional, and secretary for reference, as we've always kept ourselves below that threshold, including a good comparison, a teacher, non-certified teacher rate as compared to a paraprofessional. We're always mindful of keeping this position running. So that's the proposal. Reducing the teacher subrates to a simple grid, unifying our other subrates at $16, and then increasing their sub.
Any questions?
I'd like a little more on that rationale of keeping them below rates.
Yep. So.
Doesn't seem to me, since you could be full-time earning this, why would you want them to be a sub?
So, yeah, so to explain.
For a full-time job.
Yeah. So somebody who's looking for a full-time job is probably going to accept a full-time job. What we, what we are worried about, and maybe it's a worry that wouldn't come to fruition, there have been one or two instances where we know it's happened, but it probably, maybe it's not as big of concern as I make it out to be, would be that somebody would see that step zero paraprofessional rate, a new par rate at 1791. And if our subrate was, say, $18, they would say, oh, I don't, I don't need health insurance. And with the subrate being higher than the par rate, I can work any day I want and not work on other days. So by being mindful of that, we're saying we're keeping our full-time rates slightly higher than that substitute rate. So incentivizes somebody to accept a full-time position and de-incentivizes somebody from saying, oh, you know what, I'd love the flexibility to just not show up, you know, and come in only on the days I want, and I can make as much or more money doing that. So that's, that's the rationale we've got.
That assumes that there's a job, you know, a sub job every day, but I'm sure there are.
There are sub jobs every day.
There are sub jobs every single day.
Our fill rate is a very consistent 30%, meaning only 30% of those positions requiring subs on a given day are filled with a sub. Shockingly, that's not that different than the national numbers. I mean, this is something everybody is struggling with.
Everybody's.
Actually, that makes an argument in the opposite direction.
Increasing rates above. Yeah. I can understand that, saying that we're going to pay subs more. I think, I think the rates we've set are, are respectful of full-time employee rates. They're also relevant to our neighboring districts and where they're positioned.
You know, we have some people retiring and I noticed that in their VIOs, at least one of them, started in Arlington as a sub and ended up at metal school as a teacher.
And they do often come back and sub for us as well, which is great.
Yeah, that's true. That's, that's why you're, you've got this sort of, but a teacher.
We, yeah. We also have, if a retired teacher, and this happens every year, a retired teacher comes back and accepts a long-term assignment, which is more than 15 days or longer, we're actually paying them as a teacher. So we, we don't use this rate, we use full-time teacher rate.
I definitely am not opposing the race. I'm just not sure if they're, given your fill rate is only 30%, maybe they need to be higher.
When it comes to, the long-term was where I was going, when it comes to a paraprofessional who pay, how many days do they, do they work in a row before we, before we say, you know, really what you should be doing is here full-time?
Yeah, so if, if somebody's designated as a long-term sub, they're filling a leave of absence or some other temporarily vacant position. And in that instance, we're setting them up on essentially full-time pay, including if they're there more than 90 days, they've become benefits old. So if we have a teacher who's covering for, say, a year-long leave of absence.
So per, so we only have substitutes for filled positions? Is that?
These, these rates apply to somebody who's coming in and filling in for that staff member for a single day.
Okay. So we don't use subs for a position that has not yet been filled, but we need somebody to be here?
They could. They could. So for example, say you have an elementary school that has a paraprofessional position that's vacant at the start of the year.
Yeah.
And there's somebody who is willing to come in and sub in that instance, cover that for a short period of time, doesn't want the full-time job.
Yep.
But would love to come in and help for a couple of weeks. They can, they can come in and do that, they can receive some pay. If we determine, and there's some subjectivity to this. Um, if we determine, and there's some subjectivity to this, we use the fifteen-day mark as a kind of general guideline, if somebody's covering for that on a long-term basis, we'll pay them per the contract that that position falls under. So for a teacher, they're gonna receive teacher pay, uh, per the contract. If somebody's covering, say, a good example is, we've had somebody cover long-term, um, in one of our NACC classrooms. Um, they go through the appropriate training, we'll pay them that ISNS rate from the contract as opposed to the subrate. So we're always mindful of somebody who's covering for an extended period of time versus somebody who's just coming in and subbing on a daily basis or a short term, a short-term basis. So, we always advocate if somebody's doing that long-term sub, to pay them appropriately. Um, and we're always looking, and we pull from our sub pool and hire into full-time positions, so if somebody's, comes in, starts subbing, likes it, is, expresses interest in a full-time position, we'll hire them away, giving them full-time employees, uh, which is a, a drag on our sub pool, but getting them into a full-time position is great, so. If that's there, is that? I don't know if I answered your question.
I did.
Okay.
Any other questions? Um, I, I don't see this as an action item. So we probably have to table it until next meeting's approved at that point.
Well, why? Because it's not those updated, it's not, it's an action item. So what?
Okay.
Speaks for me.
Okay. If, if it's the will of the board, we can certainly do that, I don't.
Or we could do both. You can give him the temporary okay to at least get the next school year's credit, and then we can qualify.
Okay, so what I need is a motion to approve the substitute.
I don't like that one.
I would second that.
And we have a second, so we have a motion from Ray and a second from Jeff. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
By saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstentions? So moved.
Um, chairs report, I don't have too much tonight, though I would like to, on behalf of the board, and I think probably everybody in this room, for the buildings and people in which they, they represent, um, wanna just wish a, a thank you, um, to the, to a job well done throughout the school year. And, it, you know, it's always nice when summer comes and, and people can get well-deserved rest, um, but, uh, there was a tremendous amount of work that went into, uh, every day for these students, and just wanna say thank you from, on behalf of myself, and I'm sure also the, the board. And then, so with that, we'll move into any other business that there may be?
I have one further question. I think, uh, uh, you said that the fill rate for substitute requirements is thirty percent. What is, what is the rate of, uh, requiring sub? On the, give.
So, on the average, yeah, good question, so. On a given day, compare and compare, but I would say, an average day may have seventy-five employees across the whole SU who are absent. Um, that would include, for context, somebody who's on a leave of absence.
Yeah.
Is included in that number. Um. About half of those, typically they're gonna be positions that don't require a substitute, right, so that would include if I'm on a sick day, but, you know, my position doesn't require a substitute. Um, so about half of those, somewhere in the thirty-five to forty, on a given day are requiring substitute. We have ten or twelve substitutes covering them, so you're leaving twenty-five, thirty positions that traditionally require a sub, without a sub for that day. That's very rough ballpark numbers, and they, they vary, but that's a, they're a good average.
So.
It's a, it's a lot of unfilled.
It's a lot of, of roles each day.
I, I would say this is always an opportunity, like for anybody that's listening or watching, and for warmers, if you know people that are, this is a great time, we, this is typically when, you know, as we move into the summer, we offer a sub training closer in August, so if you know people that would be interested, if anybody's watching, and then you know people that would be interested in supporting our schools through, uh, substitute teaching, and if you just wanna know more about it, you know, you can reach out to Nick Gault, um, and he can, um, give you some background in what it entails, but we encourage people to come and, and work, it's a, a great way to spend time with the children of our districts.
One other, one other question there, and I think maybe piggybacking on what you were just saying, for a person who may be looking to, had started in a career or entering to a new career, as, do you find substitute teaching to be a, a, a foot in the door?
Absolutely, absolutely, you'll find people who, Gloria, who manages our subs, we'll talk about this all the time, we'll encourage people, come in, try a few different buildings, you know, try the middle school, try the high school, find a place that you're interested in, and then we, and then ask about what opportunities are there for full-time positions. Uh, quite frequently, uh, quite a few every year will transition into, say, a paraprofessional role. Uh, or we will have people who come with, uh, degrees or even certification that have transitioned into teaching roles. Um, absolutely, it's a stepping stone, um, it's a way to get your foot in the door and learn about the schools before you commit to a full-time position, a great way to try it. A lot of people do that.
Have you ever considered, like, a poll for the subs, where you decide not to come back? What, like a poll for the subs, like, you know, end of the day, like, you know, what went, what, what didn't go well? Um, because if they're not coming back, why are they coming back? Because if they're not coming back, they're telling their friends not to do it.
Right, so the, the frontline system that we use, which is how this is all managed, actually, they, they can provide feedback. Uh, it's a rating system of stars, but they can also leave comments. Uh, so we do go and look through those to just see, sometimes it's about the specific class, or they'll give feedback about, you know. Um, but they'll give feedback about their experience, and yeah, I think it's really good to understand if a sub comes in and they have a whoa moment, uh, why? Um, and, you know, because it can be a lot, especially that for the first time.
Right, they're there and whoa, this is a no moment.
Oh, yeah, no, that's right, they have that, like, oh, okay, that was a lot.
Yeah, and then you know what to write, oh, that was, and it goes courses.
Yep, and for people who are really hesitant about it, we'll, we'll encourage them, you know, come in and try subbing as a, as a paraprofessional the first time, instead of a teacher if you're concerned about, you know, leading the class, so there's definite, we try to handle it, you know, sensitively, to get them in and, and set them up to sixty, because we want them to be sixty, obviously, so.
Yeah, we had this discussion, was it two years ago, three years ago, I mean, sorry. And I think we covered basically the same.
Different people, though, right?
Yeah.
Some different people.
It's an ongoing issue, and it will continue to be, there's no end in sight. We're probably never gonna be in a situation where we have too many subs, so, um, love to be in that situation.
Any other, other business? Okay, uh, as an FYI, in the packet was budget status report and, uh, student enrollment for June. So now we, uh, need a motion to move into executive session, one DSA, three thirteen A.
I'll be ready to make motion and I'll second.
Oh, okay. Motion made by Ray, seconded by Jeff, all those, uh, any discussion?
By again.
Uh, I, I think we will keep it with just the board.
All the time we want, it's still gonna storm.
Never actually voted either. All those in favor? Those opposed? Any exceptions?